Ground and.
After eight thirty. And so there's was a kind of a golden era of school start time conversion that happened right after that pronouncement leading up until the pandemic, where probably eight or ten big American districts converted from the traditional start times that were earlier and had always had high school in first position to the more research supported start time positions. And then during the pandemic, we were obviously not much happened for about a two-year period. And post pandemic, there's been a rash of interest in making these kind of changes. As children have emerged from the pandemic with a variety of wellness issues, a lot of districts are searching for some sort of a solution to help students move forward with success. The research is mixed, but the majority of it is very complementary toward later start times for high school and middle school students, resulting in them truly getting more sleep and in many cases, the recommended amount of sleep. And there are some health outcomes that a lot of longitudinal studies have confirmed. There is some opposition research. Most changes that have happened result in order swapping for the various academic levels. So for example, if you put high school or middle school earlier, you must put elementary school earlier. If you put high school or middle school later, you have to put elementary earlier. And a lot of the instructional support for this issue is really confirming that probably two thirds of our instructional leadership and our teachers believe that elementary school children have a power band, and it begins to lag at about one thirty in the afternoon. So we've done quite a bit of anecdotal questioning of teachers and focus groups and principals and focus groups. And they all seem to probably sixty five to seventy percent of them clearly agree that elementary school students run out of gas early afternoon, and their best learning capability is happening earlier in the day. So an earlier start for elementary school students, at least in the in the Anchorage experience, would probably be a constructive thing. Other major university researchers, Kyla Walstrom at the University of Minnesota, have actually done quite a bit of research on this topic and indicated that they the university research community really believes that elementary school students learn better earlier. There are a variety of factions that I will talk about that have an opinion one way or the other of where school should start, where school would end, just to very quickly identify those. Those are high school students, middle school students, and a lot of after-school activities, high school students with jobs. Those are families that have an elementary school student that receives childcare from an older student that needs to be available. It is also some teachers and parents believe that it's challenging for a lot of parents to get their students to school in the morning anyhow. And at the elementary level going even earlier could be a challenge in some of our schools. So those have been some of the points of view. Most of the research is confirming decreased daytime sleepiness, increased attendance and graduation rates, test scores, especially in first period, fewer tardies, increased GPA, improved health outcomes as represented by less substance abuse, less mental health indicators, and significantly fewer automobile accidents, as confirmed by the RAND Corporation and by local sheriff and police departments that do longitudinal study before and after change for high school students who drive themselves to school. Other opposition research is mostly focused on elementary school students and the argument as to whether or not they are truly morning people or not. And so that's a big part of most of the opposition research. Page three shows the three scenarios that we engaged in twenty eighteen when Anchorage School District explored this for the first time. You see elementary in first position in every one of those. Currently, we have elementary is our third start. So in every one of those, we put elementary first and either followed with middle, followed by high, or followed by high school, followed by middle school. So when you put high school in second position, you gain back the faction of high school students that say, I have an after-school job, and I don't really want to go last because that gives me less hours after school. Some orders are set up to cater to the high school student that has a childcare responsibility for an elementary age sibling. And so some of the orders where high school gets out before elementary are preferred in those communities because those students can loop around and pick up a younger sibling. After the initial discussion of one, two, and three, we came up with four and five, which are listed there. We also pushed start times back to it to eight o'clock. And that was one of the consistent things that we found anecdotally in all of our focus group activity. And in twenty eighteen, we did forty five events of one type or another. I think we may have done more than that, but I know we did thirty five focus groups, and I think we did a dozen open houses. Consistently, the idea of starting school at eight o'clock was considered to be desirable. I interviewed the Anchorage traffic engineering department's lead scheduler this morning, and he said rush hour in Anchorage is from seven to nine. There's not much variance between seven and nine, and almost all of our scenarios show some sort of a start between seven and nine. Obviously, we are releasing mid-afternoon, so end-of-day rush hour is less of a factor. One of the things that we have learned from talking with our transportation department is that morning drop is significantly less complicated than afternoon pickup, because in the morning, students who are being transported in a parent vehicle are just dropped off, they go inside, and that's it. In the afternoon, parents are waiting. So there's a ten or a fifteen minute traffic snarl associated with parents stacking and queuing and getting in position to pick up students. So on scenario four and five, there, the first scenario, you see the high school would start at eight o'clock, elementary would start at eight forty five, middle school would start at nine thirty. We queried our high our transportation staff about doing what's called compressing the window, which a lot of districts have thrown a significant amount of money at. Right now, we have forty five minutes between starts. And so we queried transportation to see if they could go to forty minutes between starts or thirty five minutes. And their consistent answer was no. We surveyed sixty six drivers, the lead scheduler, the director, and we have already cut budget at transportation and reduced staff and compressed stops, where there are fewer stops on routes and children walk farther to a stop. So they feel that we have already squeezed all of the blood out of that turnip, if you will, and there's really not much movement there. I believe that we are probably going to have to make whatever change we make within the forty five minutes between starts framework. Under four, you see elementary would start at eight forty five, end at three fifteen. So that solution allows students that high school students that have a childcare responsibility time to get in a vehicle, loop back around and pick up a elementary age sibling. Middle school comes last. We've discussed the idea of morning study halls between eight thirty and nine thirty to allow parents with children in multiple age levels to drop a middle school simultaneously on the same trip where they're dropping an elementary school student. Scenario four is only research compliant for those middle school students, and that's what the little smiley face there means is that they're research compliant. Scenario five puts elementary in first position, high school in second position, middle school in third position at nine thirty, and it is fully research compliant for high school and middle school. And the eight o'clock start for elementary is consistent with the majority of the anecdotal observations that our teaching staff and our principals have made. During the open house, I'm sorry, the town hall process, we significantly presented the Castle's data from a very high-quality longitudinal study conducted in Cherry Creek School District, heavily traffic impacted school district. That effort was led by Dr. Lisa Meltzer and by Dr. Kyla Walstrom, and they pretty much got all of the expected results from their start time change that were concurrent or that were consistent with what other researchers had found. Kids were getting better grades in first period, they were significantly less likely to be sleepy, there were significantly fewer depression indicators. The Arapahoe County Sheriff's Office ran a pre- and post-traffic impact analysis for high school students, and they found that there were significantly fewer accidents because the kids were alert in the morning, and eight percent more of high school employees cited they were more likely to be able to have a job after school because they were well-rested. So very much a affirming study of a district that did something very similar to what we are proposing. Page eight, I'm sorry, page six shows the PLC effect. So I know that we did our work session, and the last work session was on PLCs. We did take advice of some of you, and we added those into our our town halls. Just reminder that PLCs are nationally recognized model, and we're really looking to be able to get some extra time for our teachers to be able to have some collaborative time to work and and build, and especially like in the next year, working with our English or ELA adoption at K three and really being able to work on the the school board goals and guardrails. The next slide, actually, one thing that did come up, though, is why did we choose Monday mornings instead of other times? One of the some of the some of the reasons are is Monday mornings are really high attendance rate for staff, and it mornings is a time where you don't have students in the building. If you wait till at the end of the day, and our model and a couple of the high schools had it at the end of the day, where it ended up being very disruptive because there was still students there. It takes away the opportunity to offer some tutoring options after school if you do it at after school. So we we with the high schools, we went with the morning, and that's what we're asking, we're recommending for the PLC time. Mondays is the highest attendance rate Friday. Some people said, well, why don't we do Fridays? There's so many activities on Fridays and so many days where we miss the Fridays because of in services and stuff that we missed so many so many times for those PLCs. The next couple slides were just adding in that extra hour for late start. If the one I'd focus on, if you go to the next slide there, Kathy is, if you look at scenario five with elementary school students, the late start would be at nine o'clock, which is
When elementary schools go to school now, right? So instead of eight o'clock, they would start at nine. High schools instead of eight forty-five, they would start at nine forty-five, just on that one day each week. So anyways, that, we did add that into our, our town hall, so I wanted to show you. Those particular spreadsheets there, if you have questions about that, I can answer in a bit.
Did you, go on, Member Downly.
Thank you, Madam President. So do any other, you, you said that this was some sort of nationally recognized thing, but. Can you give us an example of another school district where they only have nine hundred instructional hours a year as their goal? That utilizes this, which you know, subtracts significant instructional hours every year from the students.
I wouldn't be able to give you exactly then. Another district, but I do know that the Matsu district just north of us has this late start on Mondays. And they have the same number of minutes. Per school day that's us, so I would say that that would be Matsu just next door to us.
Do they have the same length of school years we're using?
Yes, they do.
So I guess that supposes that the Department of Education has approved. That for them because it's a state statute that they need a waiver from if they're falling below nine hundred instructional hours a year.
I, I would not know if they've asked for a waiver or not, Mr. Downly.
Well, I think it might be a good idea to reach out to the Department of Education and see if they're amenable to. Giving a waiver on the nine hundred instructional hours before we go.
So we've had numerous schools in our district with this same model for. I believe right at around thirteen or fourteen years. And they've approved that, so I would say that they would be approving that.
Thank you.
So quickly moving on to the survey data on page nine, you can see we had almost ten thousand survey responses, which is. Really unprecedented for a school start time. Analysis, in fact, I can't think of another one that has had that much involvement from stakeholders. We had. A fairly okay participation in the town halls, but during the webcast that our technology folks ran. We had really significant participation and I think the push out efforts on the part of our communication staff. Really helped us get a significant response. We had ninety-eight hundred and eighty-one English responses, forty-eight Spanish responses. We had six Tagalog responses, twenty Samoan responses. And then we had subsets of various specialties such as transportation where we had sixty-six responses. Most response was from parents, eighty percent. We had a lot of crossover where we had parents who were also employees, six, twenty-three percent. Were also employees, students were about twelve percent of the responses. We had some very. Delightful conversation with our student advisory board during their meeting and they were very engaged in this process. About thirty, thirteen percent of people who participated were medical professionals. Medical professionals were in general very supportive of making a change. I did some personal conversations with a lot of medical professionals that had a lot of. Strong opinions about the. Wisdom of making a change. As far as the. Four major issues that we surveyed on, the first one was. Should middle and high school students start later? Is it harmful for elementary students to start earlier? Is cold and dark winters, snow and ice on roads? In the Alaskan experience, does that offset the benefit of school start time changes? Issue three in the wake of pandemic is now the right time. And issue four, if it makes the transition easier, should we spend money? To pay for additional buses and drivers? Slide number twelve shows that among teachers, principals, the student advisory board. We had. A support ranging from sixty-one percent to seventy-nine percent. Of people that were supportive or strongly supportive. Of the idea that middle and high school students should start later. And that earlier elementary start times are not harmful. A little, around a third of people agreed that the Alaskan circumstance offset. School start times, meaning that the majority did not think. It changed how we should be thinking about this. In the wake of pandemic is now the right time. That support ranged from forty-nine to sixty-three percent. And then finally, should we be spending money to lessen some of the impacts? That agreement with that statement ranged from fifty to fifty-seven percent. By level. At the elementary start level going earlier, seventy percent of teachers supported it. Ninety-two percent of principals supported it. Seventy-eight percent of the student advisory board supported it. And at the general town halls where. Participants heard the lecture before they took the quiz, sixty percent supported that. Regarding later start times for middle school, it was seventy-two percent support for teachers. Eighty-five for principals, eighty-nine percent for the student advisory board, sixty-seven percent. At the town halls where people heard the research. Later start times than currently for high school, seventy-nine percent in favor among teachers. Ninety-five percent principals, eighty-nine percent student advisory board. And of the participants in the town halls, sixty-nine percent. Regarding everyone, meaning people who did not hear the lecture before they took the quiz. Meaning folks that just took this online without hearing the presentation. Support for middle and high school students starting later and elementary, earlier elementary start times doing no harm. Teachers were in favor by fifty-six percent, principals seventy-nine percent. Students sixty-three percent, parents fifty percent, everybody was fifty-two percent. This is everybody lumped together into one pile. Cold, dark winters, AKA the Alaskan experience, again, we're at about a third of people agreeing with that statement. In the wake of the pandemic, you can read that on your own, I would say teachers. Parents and everyone was coming in in the mid forties and then principals and students. Were thinking now was the right time ranging sixty to sixty-three percent. Additional funding should be expended within the high fifties for the most part. Moving on to page fifteen. Support by level with everyone lumped in, you can see that. Earlier start times than current for elementary was supported by sixty-six percent of teachers. Ninety-two percent of principals, sixty-four percent of students. Fifty-five percent of parents, fifty-seven percent of everyone. Later for middle school was supported ranging from sixty-six to eighty-five percent. Later for high school was supported ranging from sixty-nine to ninety-five percent. With principals, whether they were engaged in a focus group or not, were strongly in favor. Percent of folks responding to the statement, do you think earlier start times would be beneficial? Neutral or harmful for elementary school students? You can look at that and see beneficial and somewhat beneficial was at about thirty-two percent. And then neutral was about thirty-one percent. And then over on the harmful and somewhat harmful side, we were seeing thirty-six percent. Of response to that, so thirty-two to thirty-six percent beneficial versus harmful. And a lot of folks that felt they didn't know at about thirty, thirty-one percent. Highest ranking concerns anecdotally, elementary students walking in darkness, fifty-nine percent. Middle and high school students in sports and extracurriculars, fifty-two percent. After school childcare, fifty percent, high school students with after school jobs, forty-seven percent. Older students who need to be available to provide childcare, forty-two percent. So those were what I alluded to at the start of the presentation is what I call the factions. These are consistent in every school district that considers this issue. Those five groups always emerge and have a strong bearing on the direction in which school start time goes. Concerns by group. Changes in work schedules were cited by forty-four percent of teachers. Students said thirty-five percent of the students that participated. Said after school childcare was an issue for them. Principals were not as concerned about high school students with after school jobs. Only twenty-one percent listed that. So they were on the low side. Among medical professionals, I'm looking at page nineteen. We had some very strong response, we had about a hundred and sixty-seven doctors. About three hundred and seventy-seven nurses, fifty-five nurse practitioners. And a whole bunch of people, five hundred and thirty-two and other medical specialties and on page. Twenty, there is a word scramble of all of their capacities with the most prominent being in the center. Among medical professionals, they were very supportive of us making a change. On page twenty-one, you will see among for earlier start times. And currently for elementary, sixty-six percent of pediatricians. Were in favor, forty-two percent of sleep specialists, everyone was fifty-seven percent. Regarding later times for middle school, that was sixty-five, seventy-five, sixty-six. And later start times for high school was seventy-two, sixty-seven, seventy-one, so two thirds of them. Are seventy percent roughly. Transportation staff, we participated, had sixty-six participants. And pretty much consistently, the drivers, schedulers, supervisors. Felt that we have pushed the window to the ragged edge already and forty-five minutes. Is still resulting in the average driver having about twenty-five late arrivals a year. So given the climatological impacts of driving around here, especially after snowmageddon. I think that's completely to be expected. The last page is just a summary. Pretty much the majority of participants support making a change, especially in moving middle and high school students later. There is support for moving elementary to an earlier time, the support for that is not as strong. But again, we have a three tiered transportation system. We cannot compress it into a two-tiered transportation system. Financially, that's what Seattle did, there have been other districts that have. Expended resources in order to facilitate that, we are clearly not in that position, so we have to. Work with the structure that we have. And I would say that focus groups and town hall participants who heard, heard the research. Were more likely to be in favor of making a change than general online respondents. Who did not have the benefit of the presentation. So that's my presentation, I'd be delighted to respond to questions and thank you for your attention.
Thank you very much, I'd like to just for the record, Member Higgins has joined us online. He joined us around, I think, four eighteen. So he did get most of the presentation. Alright, so let's, we'll start with questions, I'm inclined to just go around the room. Member Jacobs, you want to kick us off?
Sure, thank you, Madam President, appreciate the, the presentation on all the work that went into the town halls, I was able to attend. Two of the three and, and thought the production quality, the engagement and the information was really well done and laid out the case and I think the data bears it out that once. Folks gained additional expertise in the area that that allayed some of the concerns. I, two questions in an effort to be efficient, the first. In terms of next steps. Is the district administration open to considering, especially with staff input and teacher input, educator input, support staff input? Reimagining a potential date and time change for professional development? If it's more well received by staff, so if, if it's something that staff are more amenable to at a different date and time while we're looking at these. Changes, my, my ask is that we be open to that conversation as part of next steps. And I don't know where that will land, but I think it's another good data point. The second was a point that actually came up during the last town hall, I believe. Just looking kind of globally at our municipality, we have a municipal proposition fourteen scheduled to be voted on. Ending tomorrow, which could fundamentally change what childcare looks like in Anchorage forever, which is really exciting. But that's going to take some time to onboard and this is a big change and. I think that there is, some have indicated there might be a benefit to making a commitment to making a big change regarding start times, but. Given the, the timing and the work that would need to be involved, pushing that back a year. And in giving that time for proposition fourteen to take hold. And then allowing the community time to plan and prepare, is that something that administration has looked at? Thank you.
Sure, if I understand the, the question correctly, Member Jacobs, number one, are you asking if the administration would be open to choosing a different day other than Monday for the PLCs?
Yeah, anything from Monday morning to Friday afternoon, I guess, I hope we're looking at. All parts of the process to make sure there's still what are most valuable to staff and what works best for students. And so I, I'm not sure that Monday morning is still in that category, it might be the case, but I hope we're asking that question.
Sure, I, I know one metric that we did look at was staff attendance, as Mr. Gustafson alluded to, and I think that's a very important. Element for us to consider and it seemed that because of activities and other obligations and staff attendance, it's really important that as many staff as possible participate in the PLCs. That's how we'll get the biggest bang for our buck, could there be a different day other than Monday perhaps, but we did want to be consistent. For our high school communities that have been used to a late start on Monday, so it would be in alignment. And strategically, it makes sense to keep them all on the same day versus having a different late start day depending on your level, if that makes sense, so it is complicated. We have looked into it, but we do feel that Monday would be ideal, just given the record of success that we've seen with high school over the past couple of years. But we'll certainly continue to look at the data. Number two, if I understand your question correctly, it's would the administration be open to. Postponing the, the start time for another year so we can see how things work out with proposition fourteen?
Well, just a, a scenario where, you know, PLCs are implemented immediately and we, the board makes a commitment to. Plan and approve of a proposal that would take effect, not this fall, but the following fall, I'm, I'm not indicating that's my preference. I'm just making sure we're looking at every option at the start of the process so we don't have to double back later.
Sure, so that's something that we've discussed and are open to, to considering, I think that's reasonable. But we would also like to hear from other board members if there's a preference for a planning year versus, you know, just kind of implementing both of these changes to start times at the same time. What I will say is I, I do feel some urgency to implement PLCs now if it's the will of the board because we have our ELA curriculum adoption and it's directly aligned to the board goals. So it would be a matter of weighing, making all of the changes at once or making two adjustments to family start times over two years, so that's really the decision that we have to make. Is there anything I left off, team?
Another thing that we also have is in a year, looking at sixth grade to, moving sixth grade to middle school, so that will be a change also. So it might work out to do it all that at once.
I see, Member Downly, any questions? Yes, Member Lessons.
This is less of a, less of a question, a follow-up on Member Jacobs. I have concerns from a childcare perspective about what a late start means, especially for. Let's say scenario five, which is, I'll be very clear, it's the one I'm most in favor of. But that makes a ten thirty start for middle school. Really challenging for most parents. And, you know. I think that morning drop offs, you know, I appreciated the point about morning drop offs versus afternoon pickups. I think families really appreciate rhythms. And getting out the door and a steady, just a steady plan for every morning, having one morning dramatically different. Could be a very substantial challenge for a family who needs to find childcare that one morning. If, if a family of elementary, with elementary students, for example, is relying on. I think one of the benefits of an earlier start time for elementary students is that it mitigates for many families the need for morning childcare. And afternoon childcare, so with an eight AM start time for elementary students. Let's just say campfire, for example, could concentrate all of its resources on providing. on providing a solid basis of afternoon childcare. But when you add one morning to the mix, they're going to have to figure out how to ramp up their care offerings one day a week. And I just don't see that as a tenable solution for a lot of families. So building on some of Member Jacobs' thoughts and comments and feedback from town halls that I attended, I am strongly supportive of PLCs, but would respectfully ask the administration to consider a Monday afternoon. I appreciate the other concerns about school, you know, after-school activities, tutoring, sports. It seems like a lot of those things happen on Tuesday, Thursday, as well as Fridays. I think that it would be easier for families to manage an early release, right? If, so if we're talking about Campfire, let's just say, and there was an early release for elementary students one day a week, it seems like Campfire or other organizations might be able to scale up those after-school childcare offerings. It also, quite frankly, as I'm thinking out loud, you know, if there are other after-school, like enrichment providers, music lessons, soccer clubs, right? Those are things that maybe could be scaled up on those early release afternoons. Whereas I don't think that that would happen for a late start. So I'll pause there. I'm tremendously enthusiastic about moving forward with the start time changes. I think that this needed to have happened years ago. So I would encourage forward movement and a consideration of a late, obviously, an early release afternoon PLC time, even if that is not optimal for teacher attendance. I think when you think of the tens of thousands of parents and families who are going to be impacted, there's got to be a little bit of balance there.
And if I could just ask a clarifying question? So is the concern specifically with the ten-thirty AM start, would that be the most problematic or just in general?
I think that, so under scenario five, again, I think that anything that disrupts a morning routine, if you are a family and you are ready to get your elementary student to school on time for an eight AM start time, that means that, you know, you can be doing your job, you know, shortly thereafter. If that's delayed for an hour one day a week, that's a hiccup that families haven't had to deal with before. And I think that holds true with all three levels, elementary, high school, and middle, because there are kids getting bust, there are kids getting driven. It's the P, it's that morning PLC change. You know, one of these things is not like the other. So I think that, to me, that would be the largest, it's a logistical hurdle to ask tens of thousands of families to deal with.
So, Member, thank you. Member Lessons, Member Holloman, your comments?
Yeah, I'll follow up and agree with Member Lessons on this. For people that have to have some kind of arrangement every day. When I worked at Diamond and I had to be at school at six AM, getting my son to elementary school was an issue. But there are some programs that start that early that transport kids, and they will probably make the adjustment. But if you were a family where nine-thirty just barely worked for you and that was enough time to drop your child off and go, suddenly you've got to come up with something that works one day a week. And especially in Anchorage, there aren't a lot of things one day a week. There are some things five days a week, if you've got the money. But, yeah, I would like for us to investigate if we can have some kind of supervised activity that would start at the normal time. So the parents that do have to drop their kids off know that they're going to be going to classrooms or going to a gym where they may be supervised by support staff or some other creative arrangement we haven't thought yet. So that for at least those families, there's an option for things to be normal in the morning. I think for a whole lot of families, mornings are stressful. They have a routine that works and they crank through it. And if something disrupts that, like you suddenly discover you're out of milk, everything's off the tracks and you gotta, you know, and this is worse than that. So, yeah, I would hope we could look at something to make it the same for the people that are doing their own transportation and realize that may come with a cost. But I think we need to at least consider that. I do understand the part about doing it in the afternoon. Yeah, there is that feeling that, you know, the final bell rings for the last hour and teachers are done for the day. I'd love to take a vote from our teachers and find out how many agree with that statement. I'm going to say it's probably a very small number. I see the need for it to be in the morning, but I see the need for us to try to keep the, some kind of arrangement so that start times can be consistent.
Thank you. Member Higgins, did you have questions, comments at this time?
Just one second. Let me, a couple of comments. First of all, I appreciate the presentation. I liked the way the presentation was pros and cons. And it did a very good job of that. That's one of the issues I've had in the past. And I think this addressed it very well. I liked the presentation to the community. I'm also proud of the responses from the community. Their responses and some of the comments are all focused. What's best for kids, what can we do? And I know it interrupts a lot of people. But there are, some of the comments acknowledge stuff, but they put the welfare of students first, and people understood that. I think this is the opportunity to go forward with the changes we need, both of them. I know it's not going to be easy. We're changing a lot of things at one time. But I think sometimes that's better to do it and go for it. And as much as it's going to be disruptive, trying to stage this out over a period of time just makes it that much more difficult. And it may drop the support for some of the changes. So my, like I said, my appreciation to administration, I like it when you're identifying both issues at the same time, pros and cons. And I think this is, moving in this direction on both issues is as much as it's going to be tough for families.
We lost your path. You hit your.
Okay, it's beneficial. It's beneficial for everyone, I think. So it has my.
Thank you. So the good thing is I've not had anyone tell me, no, on the PLCs, really. They, people understand that that is needed. But what keeps coming up is the early start versus the early release. It keeps coming up over and over and over again. So I agree, we need to probably, if we can look at that and see if we can make the early release work or what would be the pros and cons of making, of doing that. You know, the other things that came up would be, came up a lot for me would be the impact to zone-exempt students. If there, maybe there won't be any impact. And I think, I think Mr. Gustafson addressed that at the South High School Town Hall, I think. But it's, it still comes to me in emails, along with how will activities be impacted? So if we can create some kind of, you know, put more information on those two things. But I agree, I think we are long past doing, making this work, making this decision. I wish I had a crystal ball for Prop fourteen. I don't. I feel good about it, though. But we'll know tomorrow. At least we'll have a good idea tomorrow. So, so anyway, but those things keep coming up. The early start versus early release. What about kids who have zone-exempt into a certain school? And what are the problems or what can we do for those kids? And then the activities and how, especially high school and middle school kids would be impacted.
So appreciate all those questions. We could definitely go back and look at the early release and what that would entail because we need to make sure we have coverage for that time, for sure, especially with our little ones. As far as the early, the late start for middle and high school, you know, we always, when there's a need, we always make something happen, right? So if it was needing time where it's kids getting washed before school or even after school, now we would make sure we have that with our paras or security or what have you. As far as like our zone-exempt kids, you know, I don't know any school that doesn't have a spot for kids when they get dropped off early, right? We always have somewhere for kids to be because we always have parents that have different schedules. And it doesn't matter if it's now or, or a different start time. We will always make sure, I mean, we're not going to lock the door and not let them come in the school, of course, right? But and as far as activities goes, I'll tell you, if you looked at even number five there, with elementary, if elementary goes first, if we were to change the start times and elementaries went first, there's a lot more buses that actually bus elementary kids than middle or high school at any given time. And that actual schedule would open up a lot of buses so that we could actually have our actual games start earlier in the evenings because right now we have like a two-hour wait time because we have to let all the elementary buses run, get the kids home before we can even use a bus for a middle or a high school activity. So a lot of our events can't even happen until later. And if you look at like volleyball, they go till ten o'clock or later at the high school level because of the fact that the buses can't pick up kids until later in the evening. If elementary is going first, we can act, we'll actually have buses after middle school and high school time so we can get out to Kincaid Park earlier and out to, you know, Wasilla if they have a trip out there or something so we could actually get those earlier. So yes, it'll be a little darker if we go forty-five minutes later for high school. But I think with the actual buses being opened up now for those activities, I think it makes up for that.
I just wanted to say on behalf of my former high school basketball-playing self, when I had practice between seven and nine PM and games that went that late, I think that's huge.
Okay, other question, Member Jacobs?
Thank you, Madam President. I appreciate the comments by President Bellamy. The one thing I guess I would reiterate is while we're examining the placement of when that PLC time is, I think it's imperative we involve staff in that conversation. It's their time. We want to make sure that they have a voice in that. And so that's something I'm going to be looking for when we get to the other side of those results and what comes of the conversation. I understand that we don't know what's going to happen with Proposition fourteen. I, due to everything happening regarding K-12 funding in our state, I'm nervous to have to identify ways with our current resources to fill the gap between the normal start time versus the changed start time versus the even further moved back PLC time and what that might cost. Ideally, if Proposition fourteen were to pass, it's, it is a huge neon sign for a public, private partnership where we can have someone utilize the funding that's going to be allocated through the committee structure that the proposition would create for a one-day-a-week solution. I mean, it just, it makes so much sense that I think folks who are less optimistic would say, of course, that means it won't happen. But I'm hopeful that that isn't the case here. And so, but we don't, unfortunately, we don't know what's going to happen. That's going to take some time to get on-boarded. I am, I am optimistic that this is something the board will adopt. I hope we do. I think the key is going to, how we make it the least impactful for families and how we make it most beneficial for staff. Because the data says it's good for kids, which is, which I think is clear. So thank you for the presentation.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Yes, Member Lessons?
I guess a question would be, what would you need from the board this evening in order to prepare a memorandum of some sort?
For next time.
For next time.
That's right.
Well, I think what the team and I will do this week is huddle, review all of the feedback that we received today that's very helpful and then come forward with some sort of recommendation so I can report back more on the direction. I think we should go by Friday's Board Connect is what I would recommend. But it does sound like there is support for a PLC or some support for exploring this. We have some outstanding questions on the timing this year versus next year. And perhaps with the late starts that go a little bit too late in the morning. So those are some things I want to iron out before we put any memo forward.
Okay, so we need another work set?
Possibly, but we may not. Let me huddle with the team. But we, it is still possible that we can have a non-action memo at our next board meeting.
Okay. I, I mean, personally, I'm not, I don't want to delay a year. But that would be, of course, entirely up to the board. I just think the value, I mean, we are making a lot of changes, but I think they're the right things to do for our kids and our families. So, but yeah, if we can just, we'll wait until you come back to us with round three.
And then just to be clear, likely the structure for the memo on a change to school start times will likely have one recommendation that's based in the science versus multiple scenarios that we vote on that day, just so we're aware of the format. I truly believe that if we do make a change to school start times, it needs to be grounded in what the research says is good for kids or just remain status quo.
So in this, the other, I'm going back to Member Jacobs' comments around having, making sure we have input from staff. And I guess I want to clarify, Member Jacobs, is that input in the PLC time or the PLC itself?
Yeah, my intention with those, my remarks was to ask that if we're going to re-envision PLCs to occur during a different part of the week that we have, allow staff to weigh in on that. Yeah, because I think we're looking at it from a logistic standpoint.
Early start versus early release.
End of the week, right, exactly.
I got you, yeah.
Because there may be good ideas out there that we aren't considering here.
Okay, thank you. All right, so with that, not seeing any other hands, I'll take a motion to go into executive session.
And the president moves to adjourn into executive session for the purpose of legal updates, negotiations, and contracts. Second.
Moved in second, any opposition? Seeing none, we will move into executive session.